Good evening. I'd like to call the regular scheduled meeting of the Central Park Planning Commission to order. Thank SCTV as usual for taping. And we have a full set of regulars, so we don't need any alternates tonight to be seated. The first item on the business, discussion and possible action on any agenda item, which is, Application Number 15-01 of Robin Messier-Piercet Esquire for K&amp;K Developers Inc., Infinity Four LLC Owners requesting subdivision of property located at 34 Hot Meadow Street, MAP E18 Block 117, Lot 001, to create three lots, Zone PAD. Received 3/10/2015. This area must be rendered by May 14, 2015. This is continued from 3/10/15. The applicant, can I just say?
For the applicant TJ Donahue, here today is Mark Greenberg, Principal of Infinity Four LLC, the owner, and Eli Peckto from K&amp;K, K-Y Partnership, who's the owner of the application. We've been very pleased with the process, and we're at the very end of it. We believe that your commission fully discussed it at your last meeting. If you need any information from us, we're here.
And since the last meeting, the Conservation Commission has approved your proposal.
That's correct, and I hope that that approval is with you tonight.
Hiram?
Right. They gave me a letter that basically takes the Conservation Commission's action. I'd like to read that for the record, to make sure that everyone's clear on it. This matter was reviewed and discussed by the Conservation Inland Wetlands Agency this meeting on March 17. Following is the result of that review. It's several pages long, so I'm not going to read the entire thing, but I'm just going to get down to the point where they made their decision. Discussion with the applicant proceeded these comments and findings. Regarding bike access paths, town staff noted that the crossing showing a 15-foot wide pavement could accommodate if the path ends up here. In other words, the existing roadway is wide enough should a bicycle path be put in there. Town staff noted a request to be copied in the final plans when they're developed. Commissioner Recker made a motion that it is a regulated activity as it involves construction in the wetland. Commissioner Cunningham seconded the motion and was passed unanimously. Commissioner Recker then made a motion that it is not a significant activity and that it involves a minimal disturbance to wetland areas, but on the whole, no significant impacts on wetlands or watercourses. Commissioner Cunningham seconded that motion and it was passed unanimously. Commissioner Recker made a motion to grant the permit noting that this is for Parcel 1B. Does not relate to the other aspects of the entire parcel, although we know the subdivision is occurring here. Find that the subdivision is not inconsistent with our permit. Permit is granted, conditioned on the revisions to the silt fence mentioned by the soil scientist. Commissioner Cunningham seconded that motion and it passed unanimously. Commissioner Recker made a motion finding that the sediment and erosion control plan is satisfactory, subject to town staff being satisfied with construction narrative addition as required, following the submittal to DEEP. Commissioner Cunningham seconded that motion and it passed unanimously. The final report of the Conservation Inland Wetlands Agency on this matter is as stated above. So that's for the record. If you have any questions on any specific part of it, certainly can refer to the Conservation Commission's discussion on that, but they did in fact approve.
Mr. President, we went through the last meeting. Are there subsequent questions or comments you'd like to bring up?
Can I ask a question? Just curious about the, are there any implications to what they approved is just for Parcel B? I understand that, but would future developments, other things may require it goes back to Conservation?
They get to make that determination each and every time. So should one of the front parcels come in, Alan, that they would make a determination then based upon what was being proposed, whether it was back to them or not? If the drainage is in fact potentially impacts the wetlands area on the property, then they could in fact hear it again.
One of the things they mentioned in the letter I had, that I was interested in all about how pertinent this is for tonight, is that who is going to maintain the green space along Route 10?
That's one of the questions that I've asked the applicant to be sure that they address at the zoning commission hearing. They're preparing drafts of those documents right now, and those drafts will be presented to the zoning commission. Hopefully, they'll come in maybe even before that, their meeting, I believe, on the 6th. I think that's when the next meeting is. And that'll go to town attorney for review before the zoning commission acts.
So that'll come up in some, yes, it will.
And I assume that should you decide to go ahead and vote on this evening, if that's one of this commission's concerns, feel free to note that any of your recommendation is part of your action.
They talked about internal bike paths that may or may, my contingent might, that may or may not occur?
There's been lots of discussion about the bike trail. Obviously, the path is near the property, and the applicant has proposed to connect to the property. And I've talked with the Department of Transportation, the rail division, who actually maintains ownership of that property, to find out what's needed. And the applicants in the process are preparing a plan to make that connection to that trail right now. Clearly, that would serve the residents that are in the development. The question then becomes is whether, number one, whether the town can require public access through private property to get to the trail, another question. And then there's a question about liability, and the applicant's attorneys are discussing that right now. I'm sure at some point we'll discuss that with town attorney.
So they would like to link it, it's a question of how?
Exactly. There may be ways to, and I haven't discussed this with either the property owner or the property owner's attorney either, but there may be ways to provide access to the trail just off this property, just north of this property, for example, through the driveway, the existing driveway to north of utilities, very possible there. We should have to sit down and figure that out, and the zoning commission certainly will take that up too. But it was noted as part of the Wetlands Commission's action that if that's possible, they'd like to see it right along with the roadway if that's going to happen. So that's a liability question that we draw hopefully between the attorneys between now and final determination.
I would think it'd be in their interest to solve that, because it's quite a market. Plus, to be able to use the rail to trails.
Yeah, I think so. And I mean, I think that what we'll try to do is figure out how to resolve potential liability issues. You may notice, as you drive through that property, one portion of it, that is when you get nearer the residence, there are some angled-in parking that is part of that development. And of course, if people are backing out of a parking space, the last thing you want to do is to come in contact with a bus that was going through that area. So those kinds of conflicts are what are being looked at right now, and we're discussing that with them. Hopefully, we can get that resolved before the next meeting. We'd like to see it through there too, if possible.
The other thing I wondered is if people wanted to avail themselves of whatever commercial things that are built in the front portion, they'd use the rail to trails to get there and cut through as well.
Yeah, that's a good question. And you know, it may turn out that the property owner sees some benefit to people being able to get to those commercial activities that are in front from the trail. That would obviously be very helpful.
What's your man of bike path?
Well, we'll talk about sidewalk in that area ultimately. And we have to figure out exactly where the sidewalk would go and how that would blend with the open space along that front area as well. So that's, that will hopefully work out as those parcels in front come in for development, hopefully in the near future.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Quick question here. Looking at, looks like the access road, that's going to be part of the proposed Lot 1B, correct?
Yes.
And there is a right to grade in favor of Lot 2B, approximately 26 yard square feet. Where's Lot 2B? Is that a typo?
There's 1A.
See, if you're going out, it says here, rights to grade in favor of Lot 2B, 2672 plus or minus square feet, right at kind of at the beginning.
Yeah, I see it, I see it, Alan.
So that's either 1B.
It's 1B.
It is 1B.
Right.
So we'll get that taken care of. So it's correct.
Done. The memorandum that starts off at the top at the March 17, 2015 meeting, and then it refers to the adopted by the Commission Regular Meeting, 16 September, 2014, would you say that most of the suggestions of the Conservation Commission are included in the final plan that we're looking at today?
There are a couple of items that will be included in the final plan, the submission to the DEEP. What the applicant mentioned to the Wetlands Agency is, noted item, any items frankly, that were discussed at the Conservation Commission would need to go into the application to DEEP as well. Staff will be copied on that, and we'll continue to monitor that to make sure that those things were brought up at the Conservation Commission, will be addressed as part of that application. And the beginning of that, it said that it was noted that staff requested it copied in the final plans, and that's what that references to. So we'll continue to monitor that through that whole process.
Exactly. Other questions? Come, anyone? We're looking for a motion. Is there anything else, Alan, that we have to address before we?
I'm not aware of anything else. I assume that those items that were mentioned this evening will be part of your motion should you decide to go ahead. And those will be included in the final written version and I'll send out if that's your choice.
Which document should those be? Your summary of the?
That's right, summary of the conservation. Just need to refer to the potential to try and put the bike trail through there.
Yeah, explain that again, the significance of the Conservation, Conservation Commission's comment regarding the bike path.
Yeah, I think that they wanted to see it there through because of the potential use of the trail. That was really their purpose in talking about that, the access through the, somehow through the property, whether it's this particular lot or another. But they wanted to make note that the roadway that's being proposed is in fact wide enough. And there were discussions with the applicant's engineer last week or so about whether that bike path could be put alongside the existing roadway without forcing that roadway to be wider, thereby encroaching further on the wetlands. And the measurements were made, and the applicant's engineer indicated that it was in fact wide enough to accommodate that bike path should it end up going there.
Which existing roadway?
It's a new roadway, the new one that's coming into this lot.
The one that's shown on the plans?
Correct, yep.
The one from Hot Meadow?
Correct. There you go. There was some discussion, I'll tell you, there was discussion about the potential. Some people use Blue Ridge, you know, as a bike path. I don't know how many, but some people use that as opposed to, say, Lincoln Lane because of the volume of traffic on that would be significantly less. So the idea was that if people were in fact using either Hot Meadow or Blue Ridge, they would come down possibly, you know, if it can be worked out, through this property, through the roadway, and then ultimately to the trail. Whether they would have to go along down Blue Ridge, along in front of this property, and then some other access to the trail is undetermined at this point in time, but I'm recording as we go through the process, the different commissions' concerns about it, and hopefully we can try to work that out. But that's where it was, it was along the new roadway. And I think the point that the Conservation Commission wanted to make was they were comfortable with the fact that it could go along that edge of that roadway, I think it's about a four or five-foot bike lane there, without further encroaching into wetlands.
There are no, the Health Department memorandum of March 9, there are no issues there. I mean, I don't know what kind of kitchen you're going to do or not do, but at this point, I think it's, let's say it's premature, not something we have to be concerned with. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that the Health District was aware of the application and that they would in fact, you know, when the time came, be apprised of what the plan was, so if they needed to be part of that, any decisions they would make.
Any other comments, questions? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Application Number 15-01 of Robin Messier-Piercet Esquire for K&amp;K Developers Incorporated Agent, Infinity Four LLC Owners, requesting subdivision of property located at 34 Hot Meadow Street, MAP E18 Block 117, Lot 001, to create three lots, Zone PAD, subject to the recommendations of the summary that Hiram Peck presented tonight from the Conservation Inland Wetlands Agency. And Alan, what else did you want to?
I'd like to put in that we, see if we, let me try to place this, give an answer to who would maintain the green space and that consideration be given to a conservation easement, the green space along Route 10.
And the map update?
Good.
The map update.
Yep. Revised 2B to 1B. Here you go. You have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And you'll be in here next week for the commercial part of it, is that correct?
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Hiram, discussion items.
You gave about earlier, I think Chairman suggested that I copy portions of the document from the Connecticut Bar Association seminar that we attended on Saturday. I thought it's fair to say it was a really good session, probably eight or 10 of the top land use attorneys in the state of Connecticut, and the Bob's been before. Excellent session, the gallons been before as well. Really good session. It's really good to keep up with the changes that have happened. You know, they kind of, they brought us up to various things that have happened in regard to whether it's planning, or zoning, or non-conforming uses, or whatever. I think one of the attorneys even said that she would, she offered to speak louder when there was a change in the presentation from the previous year. It was appreciated by a lot of us, who said that otherwise you could, if you hadn't heard it before, you already knew what she was going to say, but the changes and the updates to the legislation and litigation were interesting. There are things that I brought back, and some of those things are members of the town hall, staff, I think is very interesting. We did have staff go. Mike Liden went, enforcement officer. Rachel went as well. Some other members from the other commissions went. I think we had members from zoning there as well. So it was, I think all in all, it was a good session. It's a long day, but it was good.
For seven hours, you'd think it was never boring at all. The lunches were good, and the breakfast was good, but it was very well, between the lawyers, they all had, some used the screen, some didn't, but they were provocative, and they made it, I mean, I think the one thing you realize coming away from that, it's all about litigation, it's all what's in the courts. I mean, Avalon must have, every different lawyer talked about everything else, it's all the case study of what decides, so it was fascinating.
I think one of the frustrating things for me every year is that there's never enough time to ask questions, you know, and I don't know if that's on purpose or not, I've suggested to them a couple of times before that if they would allow a few minutes after each presentation to ask questions, that would be.
Instead of just at the end.
Yeah, because they each have 30 minutes, and they usually take 35, I mean typical, and at least, so it's hard to get your questions in, and then you try to catch up with them later on, it's like a madhouse. So that's, that's the only part that's frustrating to me, the rest of it I think is well worth it.
For those who didn't see it, this is what you get, this is the big book. I haven't finished the stuff, but I'll pass it around if you want to see all the other stuff too, because it talks about ethics and when you should leave the room, and just all kinds of nuances, and when you vote, let's tie, and it's all tied into case law, so worthwhile. They do it every two years, Alan?
They do, yep. And the idea is, I think that, you know, every time there's an election cycle, there may be new members that come on, people that decided, I don't know, so they get off, and so every couple of years, they provide the information for people that may not have heard it before. I was actually surprised that probably half the audience was new members that had not been there before. And other than that, it was a really good mix of people from ZBAs, wetland commissions, zoning commissions, planning commissions. About half the commissions are individual planning commissions, and about half of them are combined planning and zoning commissions in the state right now. So that's about the ratio, something like that. It's interesting. And each, each one of those setups has its pluses and minuses in terms of how it works, and whether the workload is too much or too little, or whatever, so.
Everything from if we can't decide on if the building has to be pink, to, you know, it's just a lot of rules, and it helps us, I think you'll find a lot of stuff in the handouts to just glance through, because it helps us, helps us and helps the applicants too. If we, if we know the rules, or what we can and can't decide, it saves time and it's better for the applicant, so.
If somebody decides, if they look at the book that Ferg has and decide you want your own copy, if you let me know, I'll see if we have enough money and publications budget left to buy a few more copies if people really would like to see it. If you want to, you know, get one or two and pass them around, that's fine as well. Happy to do that too, whatever you think is the best way to do it. So just let me know about that, and I'll be glad to research that. Usually, the Bar Association has a few properties left over.
Everything else on your list?
I don't think so. We're breaking away, as you know, 690 Hot Meadow Street, to see the signs start to go up there now, and they're starting to begin to work on that as well. I don't have any idea when the Big Y is going to break ground, so I don't, you know, the question usually comes up, hopefully it'll be soon, but I don't know for sure. There are other people that are looking at properties throughout town that have come in with sort of sketch plans. There are a lot of good things that are on the books that I think will like, some commercial activity that I think we've been waiting for, now that we have some people coming into some of those units. The Potter Forest, PAD, will be moving forward fairly shortly as well. They brought their final plans in today to just get those signed off, and they'll be moving forward with their process through the DOT now as well. They had a, previously had a DOT permit on that property, and so I think that the new permit will be less traffic than was previously approved for the office development there. They should be in good shape with that, but they've still got to go through the process and get the sign off from DOT, so that's underway as well. One other DOT thing I might mention is that the Big Y has to have a light at their driveway turning to the track, so they're in the process, DOT process now as well. So those are, those are both at DOT. And I would, I would say, I would just hope that the DOT process could move along a little quicker, I'd be glad anybody would feel that way.
When you say a light, we talk about a traffic light? So there's going to be another traffic light right at the skating center entrance?
No, at the DOT, at the Big Y driveway, which is just south of the skating center entrance.
I thought they were using the skating center entrance.
Only as an exit.
No. Only as an exit.
That was a subject of a great deal of negotiations for almost, what, a year and a half.
Only as an exit, so the entrance will be down closer to?
A little bit south of that, Mark, where, where?
Between the two lots?
Where about where Waggon, yeah. Where Waggon, 412.
You mean, south of the, the Red Barn?
Yes, oh yeah, yeah. Yeah, the store will be.
Between the Ford dealership and?
Yeah.
Okay. Between the Ford dealership and the Nissan, that parking lot there, yeah. Because they're not consuming that whole space. The Ford dealership building is still staying in place?
You know, most of those buildings will ultimately come down, as you can imagine. On the 12 acres that's there, Big Y's taking up just about six. So the southern, six acres of that property will be for other things.
Where's the southern line to the property that they're going to consume?
I wish I could describe it better.
Is it close to the entranceway? Is the entranceway part of that line?
The entranceway is right there, because what the zoning commission says, we don't really want to see two curb cuts there. We don't want to see people come in that one driveway, be able to go either north or south, either to the Big Y or to the other commercial activities that are there. So, and then that property ultimately goes all the way down, includes that old house that used to be, I think, a rental office or something?
Yeah.
And then Sunrise, Supremes, somebody that property as well, so it goes all the way to corner, so.
I think tomorrow night, isn't there a meeting to discuss the master plan for Century Meadows?
There is, I believe it's 5 o'clock.
In the main meeting room?
Correct. So if that's something that's of interest to you, and you can make that, that would be great.
Because now that it involves, you know, the, or the board of Girards thing, and the performing arts, possibly community centers, and then the, also, I think that, correctly from wrong, Alan, the master plan does include the Bridge of Flowers and the Betty Hudson House too, or at least they've discussed possibly having that included. So it's, it's a big stretch.
Yeah, they take a look at that, because originally it wasn't, because the town didn't own it when we started this, but ultimately, there are lots of potential down there for lots of different things to happen, and it's going to get really interesting in terms of trying to orchestrate everything that's down there, in terms of where entrances are, and where exits are, and where parking is, and so on, so should be a good discussion. A lot of moving parts right now.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else that's pressing, unless somebody has questions about something.
Just an update on Economic Development Task Force. They've been kind of working through some processes, and the biggest thing right now is we're working to streamline the process through the, you know, the permitting and the approval process. They're also talking about some, some information for each of the boards and commissions, kind of like handbook type thing, so kind of know how to operate, that, that sounds like pretty good stuff. And then there's some talk about, you know, the boards and commissions maybe doing some, maybe doing some combinations, like maybe going to a planning zoning type operation, all, all up in the air right now, but it's all on the table being discussed. Any else on that, Hiram?
I think that's about it, Bob. I think that's exactly portrayed correctly, is that that's a suggestion that's kind of out there, I think it'll be discussed pro and con, back and forth. It's just a very basic recommendation right now from the subcommittee, that'll have to go to the whole task force for a recommendation, and then ultimately to the EDC for a recommendation to the board of selection. So we have also a project evaluation checklist form that came out of the committees to go to the Economic Development Commission, so that they can evaluate applications more of an economic development manner, rather than looking at wetlands, or looking at planning issues, or whatever, looking at economic development. And one of the other things that I've been working hard at is trying to get the business incentive policy drafted and get back that. We were calling it original tax abatement, but it's more than that now. It really is tax abatement, plus possibility of infrastructure rebate, plus the possibility of rebate for permit fees. So there's three things at least that are provided in that document, and that'll be another recommendation again, that will come out of the task force, go to EDC, and then ultimately may go to the selection for adoption.
So there's been a lot of work on that, on a lot of those, and back and forth with town attorney and everything, making sure we get some of those incentives, or whatever they're going to be called when they come out of committee, you know, approved, but, you know, I haven't been doing a lot, a lot of good work behind the scenes.
No, thank you.
It's been, it's been back and forth, and a lot has come out, and back and forth with a lot of subcommittees. I think we're going to have good work product when we're done, you know, September, October timeframe.
And you got your website funding, so that's going to be done.
That's right. Right, one of the biggest struggles so far that we had was trying to figure out exactly how to do that. Was made very clear to us by a lot of people that the IT department basically is the, sort of the gear point of that effort, but there was $10,000 that was allocated out of the task force budget to sort of refresh the town website. And part of that whole process includes sort of refreshing the branding that was done when Main Street did that, with the brochures and pamphlets that are handed out to people when people look for information about the town, or the school system, or whatever. So we received bids on that as well, and that will go forward. I think the cost of that, and that'll be probably out of the same budget, so those materials, as well as the website, will be refreshed at the same time. And I think people will like it, I think it'll make it look a lot more sort of up-to-date, a little bit more modern. little bit more modern. Our website right now is, I would say, functional, but the problem is, is that, you know, as a bureaucrat, I sit there and look at it and say, yeah, I can find what I want, but can the general public find what they want, or can the seniors find what they want? And I think a lot of people looking at that site for the first time will say, oh my God, what is this, you know, how do I get there from here? So the idea is, is to try to make it look a little cleaner, make it look a little easier, not to be so intimidating to people who are trying to find information. We did get the GIS thing up, and I hope, hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at that, it's very helpful, very useful, we think that's helpful as well, but we think that sort of new addition to the website will be a real plus as well. And that'll be coming along, so that the changes to that will probably take place maybe July, August, something like that, and so we'll have it kind of, all this stuff sort of coming forward, you know, probably end of August, something like that.
On this planning and zoning combination thing that's tossed, been tossed around forever, but one of the points that brought up Saturday was, the zoning commission has an equal, the thing you've got for planning commission is an equal one for zoning, and one of the attorneys stressed that when you have combined planning and zoning, you have to really, really make sure you have the right hat on when you're making those decisions, you know, it's two distinct things, and you can't be a planning commissioner deciding zoning issues and vice versa, so it's kind of, kind of interesting how that would work.
What some towns do, that have combined commissions, if they have one meeting a month, which is a planning meeting, and then the second meeting of the month is a zoning meeting, depending upon how the budget, how they.
So it's not everything, throw it all apart, kill it, kind of thing?
Some commissions do that, but I can tell you, I have worked for a few of them, and it can get, weeks get very long, so sometimes it's better to split the workload up between, you know, two meetings. You still meet every, every two weeks, but even if the commissions were combined, you want to separate the duty, so that you don't get confused. So looking at a subdivision, one week is not the same as looking at a site plan and following, different set of regulations apply, and just need to sort of keep that in perspective, and I'm sure that's one of the things that'll be discussed going forward.
It's in a discussion state, it's what's being discussed in the subcommittees, you know, come up to the entire, and all of this, you know, any, anything you have regarding that, just send it to me, and then we'll, you know, make our commission know how our feelings are. I have my feelings, and I know how I would approach it, but it's collective, and any change like that is going to have to go to a charter revision anyway, so it's not just going to happen by rope.
Is there a great expense involved here, to combine, or I mean, to eliminate the expense to combine the two boards? I mean, since we're all volunteers.
Well, there's a lot, what happens is that, not tonight necessarily, but what often happens here is an applicant might come into a meeting, whether it's design review, zoning, planning, wetlands, storage, ZBA, whatever, and they're sitting there with $1,500 worth of consultants, you know, so every single meeting they go to, it adds up considerably, in addition to the plans that they, they put together, plans for certain projects, one of which looked at tonight, there's probably quarter of a million dollars already right on the table, they don't even have their final approval yet. So it can get expensive from that standpoint, but I think that, obviously, the town's very thankful of all the volunteers that do give their time. I think what the subcommittee, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but what the subcommittee was looking at was how to make the process more streamlined, not necessarily make it easier or eliminate stuff, but to just make it flow more smoothly, more quickly. So the answer could be no, but you get to know quicker, rather than, you know, spend six months or a year trying to figure out how to get to know.
And that's exactly the thought of the, of the subcommittee, is for the applicants coming in, how do we make this more inviting or friendly for them to get through the process? And eliminating, you know, multiple positions, and maybe just making one presentation might make it a lot, lots more streamlined for the applicant, and that's, that's what we're looking at in that subcommittee, we're looking at the streamlining of the process. It may not come up, it may be, but for towns of our size, what was, what was the mix again on numbers?
About 50/50.
About 50/50, so.
What, have split boards?
Yes.
Of course, some towns are, you put 300 people on them, or whatever, you know, I mean, it's a matter of volunteers probably, and how many people we can get to a meeting.
It is about 50/50, usually it's the larger cities, it seems to be have the split boards versus the smaller communities, so at least that's what we're finding on our research. Again, it's a suggestion, shoot me an email if you have strong feelings for that, that would be good to know.
Okay. Any other questions on Hyrum?
Yeah, Hyrum, the Ellsworth property?
Yes.
Has the, was the official?
Does the official open space map that was given to us, Chairman signed it off this evening, we expect the map will probably be filed on Thursday.
So the closing with the land trust happened?
On Thursday, hopefully.
This Thursday?
Yep. It's there, it's been signed, and if they pick it up and file it, it'll happen Thursday, and I'll let everybody know, so it does, but yeah, it's moving along.
Maybe I'll just make a couple of comments about the regional planning commission meeting that was held last, last Thursday. The regional planning commission is comprised of, I think, 32 capital area towns and cities. It's expanded a little bit over the past couple of years, so we had the meeting in Mansfield last week, so now typically they've been in West Hartford, so it's pretty easy to get there. Going all the way to Mansfield's a long haul, and, but the people in Mansfield and Talent, they were very happy that I was there.
You want gas?
No, no, I'm okay with that. The Town of Mansfield Director of Planning presented their plan of conservation and development, and they had gone through a lot of public, public comment, and not a charrette, they didn't say charrette necessarily, but it was very similar, so they had a grant to put this together, and they've come up with a very nice document. What came through loud and clear was the residents wanted to maintain the agricultural and mucolic nature of the town, okay? And that was straining some of the economic development ideas, so, but they put it all together. Then secondly, the University of Connecticut, I can't remember any, but he was the chief architect of the university, they presented their five-year, 10-year, 25-year plan, and the interesting comment that was made, both the director of planning from Mansfield and Yukon people, illustrated how they work together, you know, because Yukon is in stores, which is a community within Mansfield. Apparently that hadn't been the case in the past, Yukon had been doing what they wanted to do regardless of what the town may have been asking them, so it looks like there's a great deal of cooperation, so the two plans actually meshed pretty well, so that was interesting. The representative from Newington, I don't remember her name, expressed some concern over a recently proposed House bill that, trying to get, I don't remember the number, but essentially created a transit path authority, that gave the state a little bit of latitude with developing along primarily the busway and subsequent state-developed transportation modes, and since the busway goes right through Newington, has two stops, that town was very disappointed that they weren't part of the discussions for the House bill before it was presented on the floor. Now, I think there's been a lot of discussion between last Thursday and today, but I don't know where the bill stands, you know. I know it doesn't affect us directly, but it was a major concern for someone in the regional planning commission group.
Can you talk about the store center development, Mel, involved?
There was a tour of the store center prior to the meeting, I did not participate in that.
It's a lot different than it used to be.
It's a real, yeah. It's a lot different.
It actually took them, since they, when they first started that plan, it's taken about 10 years for it to get off the ground to where it is now, so the fact that things happen that slowly shouldn't surprise any of us, but it's a complex process, no question. But the fact that they've got a tremendous amount of people from the university, hopefully now contributing positively to that process, rather than sort of just doing what they want to do, is always an interesting thing. You may recall that that actually affected us slightly, not to distant past, when they were talking about the fact that they don't have enough water, and so there was lots of discussion about where can we get some more water, and just how are we going to get it here, and so on, so I don't know that that discussion's been totally over with, but we'll have to just keep an eye on it, so.
That was mentioned, the water supply was mentioned as a difficulty with any of the development. In Mansfield, I think that a great part of the proposed development, developable areas surround existing water supplies, primarily in the southern part of Mansfield, I guess there's, I don't know what the water company is there, but there's sewers and water, you know, a great deal in Mansfield is open, open land, and the other thing that was interesting was, a lot of the people in Mansfield get their water from the university, it's not the other way around, you know, so the university is a supplier, and that, with the limited water supply, it's straining some of the relations, interesting. So that's what I have to say about that.
Anything else?
I guess we do some minutes.
Okay. Let's go through the approval process of minutes for March 10th, 2015. Any changes, deletions, additions to the first page? Hearing none on the second. Page four. Hearing none. Do I have a motion of approval of a minutes?
Motion to accept a minutes, that's a right.
A second?
Second.
We have a second, discussion none. All in favor of accepting the minutes for March 10th, 2010, or 2015?
Aye.
Opposed?
Extention.
Extentions? One abstention.
Janice, could you slip in a typo now and then, just to make us feel much word? Of course, our eagle eye, I mean, I ran through, I couldn't find anything, and neither anybody else, so thank you for doing that. All right. Kevin, would you like to make a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
For the second? No second?
Second.
Discussion, all in fair?
Aye.
Opposed?
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.